Right, six o'clock, ladies and gentlemen, good evening all.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Tell Mayor's announcements. Christmas festival. Uh, the event was very well organised and attended. It was lovely to see so many people back out in the streets again after. It was amazing, it really was, yeah, and the atmosphere was just brilliant. From the parade to the fireworks and everything was most enjoyable. Little bit of a hiccup with the, the light switch on, but. We got over that one quite well, thank you.
Tractor parade was fantastic as well.
Coming to that one.
Yeah, brilliant.
Um, tractor dressing on the parade. That was a really unique event, I thought. That's for, for, for us in anyway. I think it was quite big and docile somewhere.
Yeah, big and well spoiled, yeah.
It was good fun.
So, and again, well organised and well attended for the first year, so brilliant, yeah. Uh, I've never judged a tractor before, but. I didn't get any boos when, when the winner was called out, so.
They've reached, I think it's gonna be just shy of three thousand pounds.
Oh, that's fantastic news. That's, that's really brilliant news, yeah. And uh, it's, it's got so much scope for being bigger and better in future years, I think that, doesn't it? Brilliant. And then the Dollygum last night is, um, I couldn't attend this due to. We have a. Family Christmas gathering to exchange presents and all that, and that just happened to clash. I've heard some great reports from it, sorry, yes. So uh, we look forward to, to seeing that next year. So that concludes the Mayor's announcements. Statements from the public, have we got any people online?
No.
There's no statements from the public. Unless somebody's doing one on behalf of anybody in the public. Statements from county councillors. Karen's not here. Um, there isn't much to report to go on, it's quite a quiet time. Uh, and I have been. On holiday. There was one thing that did crop up yesterday with me, uh, from Kim. For the, with regards to the four great highways. I think she's emailed you back today, hasn't she, this evening?
Well, not well, well, I came.
Uh, there's, there's quite a long email come back from yours. Um. Basically, it's in the early stages of planning. And. Aaron or I were to report back to the meeting. I was in Canada unfortunately for that meeting, but. It wasn't reported back because Kim was doing a presentation, I think, in that meeting, wasn't she?
Yeah.
So that's where the, the lack of communication came in. Um, I did confirm with her yesterday that, that, the, the protocol is to contact Gareth with the update. So that everybody's in the loop at the same time. Without, uh. So when the notes from any meeting we have. Goes forward, Gareth gets a copy of those notes.
Yeah.
So, so, I, as I say, everybody's in the loop there.
Yes, it's an email I sent. Basically, uh.
I saw the one you sent, actually.
I thought, oh, yeah, I'm lacking of. But, uh, say, China, it was. Um. It's almost like we're planning anything. To a point where, where.
Yes. It was the initial consultation table. Basically, it's what, what could we do with the four great highways? Uh, they've had those consultations, Karen and I went to, been to one meeting with them. And when we both, it says it in that email, actually. We both strongly said that platform is no go at the end of the bridge. So, um, she's suggested that their. Second plan was to put it down. Um. In the wood, if you like, down by the riverside there somewhere. So that's what the con, this, this going up to consultation, that bit. About everything's going up to consultation, it's all explained in that email back to you.
Probably change all the platforms, won't it?
A nice really large platform.
Part of the bid they put in for the funding was that it's an extra, it's an extra space for people to view the bridge.
Yes, that's the point.
Yeah, that's why the platform was like going where it was initially by then, but totally practical.
It is, it's rather smooth, isn't it?
So obviously shouldn't put a railing on it.
Do you know that you're using a pen in the, the footbridge?
Yes.
That's all.
Yeah, that's all in the scheme, yeah. I think that's one of the things that brought it up. Because it's, it's, the full path down there needs a lot of repairing, doesn't it? So, uh.
We, we have that email, just to mention on all that.
That's right, yes, that's all I can tell you.
It's why I should send things out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, we just want consultation, something.
That's it, she did send us out, um. Who do you think should be contacted? And both Karen and I went through all that, including just the shopkeepers. And the residents through associations, if you like. If, if we can't reach out to them. And the only other thing, DCC, since I've been back from Canada. I've been on five more trading sessions. They're never ending. Um. Licensing carbon literacy code of conduct, finance and governance. So, um, cloud, the carbon literacy one was very interesting, actually.
Have they, uh, mentioned about their budget yet?
Yeah, that was released in the press.
Oh.
Uh, not by Derbyshire, but by the government, Wales, six days ago. Uh. The average in Wales is seven point nine percent increase. I think Derbyshire getting eight point four. So we're about average for, for the, for the next, which is true.
Just, we're not, we're, we're below average, aren't we?
I'm not sure about my own chat on that one. So that concludes County Council announcements. Apologies for absence.
Yes, you've got councillor Ryan that's, that work in London. Um, councillor Rush, that's his answer, and councillor Farrow have personal family commitments tonight.
It is a busy time of year, isn't it? So. Do we, do we accept the apologies, Zach?
Yeah.
Cool. Any declaration of interest in the proceedings tonight? No. Then, just as a point of order, um, if you come across anything and you think, oh, that can affect me or it does affect me, you can declare a, an interest at it. The minutes of the last meeting.
I suppose it was a true record. Was it, we did have a presentation last, on, on PM, I think, was it the last, was it? Wasn't previous, it's a note that had been noted down in the, in the minutes that we received the presentation.
Yes, in the minutes, um.
Yeah, that's, that's. I think it was the last meeting, I think it was, yeah.
Pretty sure. If not, it's all of them, so.
Yes.
So do we accept the minutes? Providing that, that, that items in, wasn't it? So how we do it, so.
I think it's big, we're, our tradition was that we accept.
Yeah.
Into what you wanted to do. Yeah, I'm happy to continue from that, so.
I mean, it was. Just a presentation.
Yes, yeah, there's.
There was no decisions to be made. So it would affect.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have any decisions.
So do you, Gareth? Financial matters.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Jack. And the first one is just to, that audience require. Evidence of a minute, and she notes changes to salaries. And the NJCP award for. You last April. You can see it's now been settled with a flat rate given to all points. Uh, on, on scales, and, and that's to be implemented from the first of April this year, so it's fact dated. Uh, so the recommendation is that for all the purpose the town council endorses the. Um. Sorry, I can't remember. The increases in National Joint. Government Service pay scales.
Box that, do we have a proposal to accept that?
Yeah.
And a second then?
Yep. That's great. The second is the Slavoshin Christmas Lunch, Community Christmas Lunch. We did support this last year, uh, because. Obviously, they'd had eighteen months of Covid and difficult in funding. And had been really supported by, uh, two individuals, really. Uh, so we did take an application last year. There was a point where they felt they couldn't go ahead this year again because they were concerned they had no money, so they've contacted us again. And, uh, in view of the fact we supported them last year. And that they do provide a very good service and. Coupled with the current cost of living crisis as well. Uh, this would again offer a nice hot meal on Christmas Day to those in the community that are either lonely or. Uh, suffering from various illnesses. Um, you will recall that we were fortunate that, um. We got our traffic management for nothing at the, uh. Christmas Festival and the, uh, amendments that day. So we could use the same there and fund different civic events. So the cool suggestion is that to, yet again, support the, uh. Community lunch and tuna four hundred pounds.
So if the event costs four hundred pounds, we're essentially paying for the event, we're not donating towards it.
No, the last year it was definitely under, but it was, you know, three hundred and ninety cents or something. But they do send us a complete account.
So when these participants can donate. If they do, then what happens? Do we get that back or does that?
Well, they'll claim what they need.
Right.
My question was, uh, did they approach us this year?
Yeah.
They did. And following on, on previous councillor's question. Is this a, are we putting a, a, a solid sum of money, or are we, if they're to leave. Picking up, picking up their shortfall?
It, we would only pay the, so if there's a shortfall and it's, like, if they, if they manage to get money in. And it comes in at three hundred, then we would give them three hundred, so we're sure that they're not.
So it's two of that.
But if it's, but it's over four hundred, well, well, we can, you know, we'll be at that.
Yeah, see, there's more members. Yeah.
Okay. So we're very pleased to present it.
Can I suggest that perhaps we put it in the budget?
If you can. While I wrote the report, I thought it's something that perhaps the council couldn't support every year in a weaker budget.
As a budget, I mean, as a city. Use it from anywhere, do we?
Yes, so it would become a, one of the city events that we support every year.
Hmm. I'm actually running a rap on myself and Sam in the shop. On the proceeds, uh, of the profits and going towards them.
I suppose, because a lot of local fundraising is going on.
Yeah, we bought like a four foot stitch up at Manchester last week. It's, uh, when you need cleaning, so we can use it when finished.
Still bottom tall, usually.
Yeah, nobody is, isn't it?
And there were lots of factors, I mean, uh. The press, there's no public, Fabiano. He told to leave for some unknown reason. Uh, by the church, but apparently he's back two days a week, so there was an issue. You know, about persisting with the food at New South Beach.
Have they sorted that out, because I.
I hope so, he's a great chef, yes, he's.
No, but we've been, it's because they weren't, they didn't let them scout, didn't they, which I responded to, but then they were really not.
They've got a few now, I know Charlie's going, she's going on the data. So this, yeah, I think they're okay for that, it was just. There were so many factors that they felt they couldn't go ahead and then.
Mike's doing it as well, yeah.
Yeah, my, my comment, and then there was a rush really to, uh, they felt under pressure that because so many people said they're gonna miss it and, uh. So that's why it's, you know, I think it was November last year we had a request, that's why it's come later. Um, the authorised payments. It's. The schedule's there, um, just running through them, bootbox courier. Uh, that was getting the damage across streets down to be repaired. Um, came back, everything's working, functioning quite well. I'm actually very pleased with the refurbished, the streets, well, the colour is far better.
On trees.
Also. That was just a courier, yeah, that were half of the money, the dollars, I mean.
Yes, yeah.
Had gone. Obviously had to get it back to, um, Bridge North.
Ah, right.
For the entry, they said we could do it again, but it was. Trying to make it. Do the right thing.
Yeah.
You know, it was impossible, so they, they took that to come back. Um, coming down the services, the end of the contract payment for that. Uh, which we've agreed through asset management. And. Just to note, gas is done up. And. But hopefully we've, we've had somebody in today upstairs. Uh, but everything's gonna go down, shut down tomorrow. Um, and then. See how long we can. Not put the gas on in the new year, hopefully it won't be as cold. I'll come on to gas in the financial statement because there's some. Some elements there you need to discuss. Um, PA was the stage, the PA for the Christmas Festival. An emergency raising was the, the cracked glass here. And there's another crack in the top one, which is, I feel a hell of a draft, actually. Yeah, we can't close that, we can't close the top because it's broke. Uh, and if we close it, the danger is smashed completely, so once that's repaired, we can close. Cleanse service of screws, I know it's a small amount, but. No, that was, that was it. Uh. And then come down the one off, so it doesn't trap the cross on the expansion. Uh, this is every year we pay for all the web certificates as well, so we're posting. Otherwise, as I say, it's, uh. Happy to accept those.
Can I do something?
Yes.
So that's good. On reconciliation, I did let belatedly send out to. Our acting director, if you may. Uh, the dumb statements of the reconciliation, if you ever balance it up. If you're happy, we can get that signed off, if you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll probably propose that.
Uh, financial statement, I might share. Because one of two things, it's, you know, we have three months to go. Um, you notice there we down to twenty, what was it? Seven, twenty seven. We've had the forty nine in the final. Reset pain is coming today. Do you run the thirty first really, but it's always continued, just prior to cousins. So that, that will. This, I wanted to work. I just want to, to. Show. As you can see, on things like maintenance, we're getting very close. Still quite a lot of moves to do. I'm still definitely trying to work at the chain bridge then. I'm constantly contacting them. The contracting said he would do it, but I think no way with that. So obviously our projects money could well. Take a hit on that basis. Um. Christmas illuminations. We believe. We'll have the bill of the seven thousand eight hundred. So as you can see, there's. Most of that will go and then we've got electric charges on top of that, and there'll probably be a little bit there at the end of the financial year. Um. But then if you look, there's a couple of items here, the. Energy. We're getting very close now to the budget. But if you recall. Uh, about two or three meetings back, I mentioned that. We'd had a, a yearly adjustment, so some of this money should have accounted last year.
Yeah.
So there's legitimacy that we will be getting close to, or we, we probably have to again. Probably take some money from projects to, to cover that. And the other concern really. Um, is, um. Income. As you can see, there is the, we. Have been slow growth post Covid, we were around about fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty room higher. And we're significantly down, we've got, um, twenty pounds for the Christmas thing to come in. So you can probably add about two thousand, it's still gonna be. A bit tight, and we're careful, and maybe can understand, I mean, our saving grace is the. They say asset projects. Um, because obviously we're not, if you remember, we were that. Bid into the levelling up fund and we're holding that money back to see if we could use it to either these ability to be. Um.
In the grand scheme of things, that sixteen thousand pound, that project is prob, could probably get eaten up very, very quickly.
Yeah, so, um, so just you to note that. And of course, we'll have a battery to get.
Just one moment. As you roll down, the, the, just happen to notice the other day, the, um. The, a bit further down. Um. I think, I think that's bridge.
To increment.
Uh, that's it, forty seven computer hardware, what does that cover? Is that just rental of the computer equipment or?
No, that actually covers the bracket that's behind the television.
Right, such.
Yeah, something else we have to try to get that fixed on the wall, yeah, two brackets, one for the. So that, that's.
So that's a one off thing.
One of this, yeah, okay. So that, that's covers the twenty four quid for a bracket and, uh, something, we've got another bracket on top for the light bar.
No, the forty seven, I was at the, the computer hardware, the nine thousand forty two.
Oh, sorry.
Nine thousand six hundred and fifty four months.
Oh, yeah, that's the one off, because that was. Same thing.
Same thing.
The, the, the increase in costs, yeah, it's a one off. To cover the cost this year of the, um, the, um. Rally bar. Came in about five thousand, we normally have about a thousand in case any computers break or.
Right, absolutely. So that's something where, possibly next year, we won't have obviously that, um, that. Initial cost, you know, I mean.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not, it's not in the budget next year, we have that right there.
It was our choice to go, um, um. This route of, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so that's just you to note and, uh, be aware. Of where we are. Hmm. Oh. So, right at the top, I'll stop sharing, just for now. Yes.
That concludes the financial reports.
Yeah. Um, the next one. Is representative body, so if you remember. Now, we did quite a few appointments at the delayed, uh. Eight after the AGM. Uh, but there was one that you requested more information on. I just want to share the screen now because it's not be there, is it? I'm just. When you can reach off the. Yeah. The one, uh, one. Yeah, the one was the Slavoshin England trying to release the new charity. And you, the. I contacted the, uh, trustee who's the part two, Glintup, Triumph. Um. And we still have councillor Sherman on there. Actually, as it were, I think we've got George Hughes still on there, but we only take the three representatives, but it does say actually from the community. So you could, we could see if councillor, ex-councillor Sherman and. Councillor, ex-councillor Hughes still want to stay on because obviously haven't resigned. And that would mean that we'd only have a single vacancy if the council felt they wanted to put somebody on to that, um, charity. And as you can see, it means to people with disabilities, drive through individual organisations. Within the area it operates, and Farley is currently the chairman. And has. The incumbent in Saint Cotlins Church.
This is one that, uh, just, um, at the back of the church, they, some of the boards. And one of them refers to this.
Right.
So it's a charitable sum that was given in seventeen million.
So do we have a volunteer to move forward? Move forward for that post, post?
Again, we're a bit thin on the ground.
We are. And. How often do they meet?
I think it's about quarterly, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, as I said, if I speak to the two ex-councillors to see if they're willing to stay on it. And then at least we know there's coverage for the community. And perhaps bring it back then in the new year, if we pull back on it, it's. Be free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's everything, yeah.
Uh, the other is the Destination Management Partnership, councillor Ryan agreed to do this when she was appointed, but. There's a work commitments back and forth until, and she hasn't really been able to attend. Anything to clash. And she feels she'll not be able to give an active role into the work, wishes to stand out. Excuse me, unless the replacement is required. So the recommendation is, first one, we don't see now, we defer that back. But the other is, is that anybody else would like to step in on the, the Destination Management Partnership.
What exactly is it?
Uh, it's. It's a, it's a body that works closely with the county council, its representatives from towns, the, the businesses. Italians, and they develop. The Destination Management Plan. And they monitor the plan and basically communicate on a regular basis to. Uh, develop the marketing of the area as well, so it's.
Turn them, basically.
Tourism bases, yeah.
Sounds very interesting.
I mean, you are in, you are in the middle of driving the tourism plans forward for Derbyshire. Uh, and, you know, they're, they're a very international, focused with Wales, with Envisy Wales. So yes, you know, it's.
You know, again, when they meet and how some.
They're not, they're, they're more sporadic, but no more than four times a year, definitely.
But we can, we can perhaps defer that to the next meeting, we've got more people, if we don't get anybody, I'll, I'll put my name forward.
Okay.
Because I am. A platinum, uh. Advisor, yes, ambassador, sorry, yeah. Platinum ambassador, nice, but.
You're a platinum ambassador?
I am, yeah.
Of what?
Tourism ambassador.
Oh, okay.
Which is part developed from the Destination Management Plan. Yeah.
I'd have a look at it as well, if you don't mind.
Festival press, I can't remember all the public commitments I've got, so I'll need to check.
Well, we're bringing around in, in January, yeah, that, that's the easiest. And section six duty, um, relatively easy, oh, sorry.
One more.
Yes, you know, we, we've, we've looked into this, but we, Charlie and, and myself. We've spoken with various group groups, we've spoken with, we had a meeting with the, uh, food chair. Um. We spoke to the church initially, who weren't going to do anything because of the situation I mentioned before. They didn't have something to do with catering. And, and at the time of writing, the only general consensus was that. Uh, the facility at the library. Would be sufficient. There was a concern that, uh, we'd be asking for the same group of volunteers to, to run. Uh, things if they weren't in the library, because obviously the library's staffed. Um, I've spoken to, I can't remember the name, in the library. Uh, we're in sort of communication each week, and at the moment it is up and running. The uptake is very low, less than half a dozen, if at all on some days. But since this report was prepared, yeah, I've noticed now that. Bring, uh, Saint Cotlins is now doing Wednesdays and Thursdays as well. So where does the library, you should, Thursday, people could go to Saint Cotlins. And, and I think that's because Fabiano's back. So at the moment, uh, we don't. Really see that there's a need, there's no great demand. But should, as you both said, should that develop or get worse, then. The library will speak to me and we can bring it back and consider. Uh, perhaps in the spring, if we need to. Develop something, which will probably be in this room, because it's the one you could keep the wall most, um, without heating the whole of the building. Um.
I do, I do think it's something worth considering. On a better plan. Long term basis. Because it's unlikely to go away in the next two or three years in terms of fuel and poverty and things like that. And I don't think the numbers using it really is a significant thing. For me, it's the fact that anyone needs it, do you know what I mean? So it's like that stick, you know, even if it's any.
I mean, there were, so the funding was August scrum.
But I wonder whether we can get a hit at it maybe a bit for next winter in terms of.
Yeah.
Organisations and what they're planning, so.
I, I think the biggest concern, speaking to a lot of the others, where the, it's a small pool of volunteers and it's getting smaller with the movement.
Yeah.
And to manage that and put up a rope to guarantee you could have volunteers in. Um.
But if we can spend it earlier in the year, come to the council and do that.
Yeah, well, we, we, obviously, well, it's not, we should never know with the government, there may be funding next year.
Yeah.
Um, so perhaps if we can start planning. Maybe, well, I, I think our furniture's a bit roomy as well, to be sitting in all day. So it may, we may have to look at borrowing or begging some.
It was all depends on whether that funding is available next year.
Yeah.
There's only feedback online, the people's so small.
And people just, I don't know.
Doing, I don't know, it's probably affect it's advertising.
Hmm.
Yeah, um. I think it's been, I mean, it's, it's been, it's gone out, we have the recent, um. Tenant newsletter from Derbyshire, it's in there, you know, so it has been out to, uh, all that.
I've seen it about two, actually.
And it's, you know, it's on the website.
Some things coming next.
Something yesterday, it's been on Facebook, it's a Facebook feed for whatever issue as well. With Derbyshire, well, um, Derbyshire housing newsletters. Got different posts the other day, so.
We tend to get a lot of people using the newsagent's third point of access, because, you know, with locals. There was a hundred and thirty locals that come for a paper without, you know, the ones who ordered paper. And I think really where we are on that corner, it's a missed opportunity for advertising and all the things that comes with it.
It's massive, it's really is.
Yeah, or leaflet, we get a leaflet out for people, and, and. We've got a general, obviously, we may be in social service over nineteen years, working with disabilities, mental health, physical disabilities, I'm a youth worker as well. You spot people as well.
Hmm.
Hmm. That may need that little leaflet.
Hmm, oh, um.
You know, it's just, maybe you could help it, you know, it's my, my. You know, it's just, maybe you could help it, you know, it's my, it might be a way.
It's not for now, necessarily.
Actually, the recommendation, the recommendation is that we don't create a warm welcome hub. Should there be an increase in demand, then the council could reconsider its position subject to funds. So that's the recommendation, so we have a proposal on that one. Yeah, cool.
I will check if there's leaflet technology.
Yeah, we got a tweet that said we want one like, you know, put him in the paper so he can.
This is a broader point. We used to have something for Sanguine News, didn't we? Which distributed all the information, which we don't anymore.
No, it's a Kevin one now, you know, they have a book called Kevin, they all took it up, yeah.
But it's only, it doesn't come out that often.
There was one at British Hotel a month, three months ago, when I was on to the plan. Can't remember what it was.
There is a presumption in these matters that people look at Facebook, but ninety percent of the old folks on there don't.
And they don't, and some of the younger old.
But it is amazing how stuff gets around on that. Sixty thousand, everything that's going around.
Everybody knows within the hour.
It starts off in the news agency, you don't know about it, down by the thunder bridge. But that's it.
We're going off topic a little bit. Yeah, the next item is, it's that time of year again, section six duty. When I say it's that time of year again, I haven't actually realised it was over three years. We've prepared a report every year, so it doesn't be that difficult really. But it is a requirement to post it on the website and to send it to the Welsh Government for compliance with the Wales 2016. So recommendation is that we publish the attached section six duty ahead and note show management accordingly. And what I've done, I've picked up the previous reports, as you can see. Yeah. And done it and, yeah. And, you know, we have, and it is commensurate, it has to be commensurate with the type of authority you are, so. We've done, you know, I think we have done quite a bit. And elements more recently, like the green infrastructure work with the egg and the planting trees, not messy we, but the royal we on the recreation ground, using that funding. So.
Which is that?
The green infrastructure G I initiative opportunities. If you remember, there were those illustrations with shade. So they, we had to end of, much, end of last year, beginning of this year, which I needed to spread. So it went in, some new trees on the recreation ground and replaced some of the bigger ones that had to be taken out due to disease. How to grant scheme is still targeted. As I say, and I think the one which is quite useful is we've changed we now to include resources for section six duty, climate change and biodiversity to, for the Just Love Committee. So that would be the report if you happy. Send it on.
Can I just check, so what the update on the National Biodiversity Network? And then I've been looking at the review process working with them, what's that involving? So I'm having a report by the way.
Yeah, there's an online species whatever call, and you can do a circle.
Like a census mapping?
Yeah, and you can do a kilometer radius and every year checking. And we were working the friends of the earth, but hoping made all that difficult. So we, but we need to start again this year now. I went, actually, the council was out and I were looking at the changes the other day. When we re-plotted, you can see all the different species within one kilometre. So that needs to be in via, to spoke, to climate change committee.
I just must be doing recall of all these species.
Sorry.
Who's doing the recall of all these?
It's the N B N A National Biodiversity Network, they do grids and click across. So, you know, it's, it's easily recognised site you go on and then you can say one kilometre circle based on the centre.
So they do the link, so what's that problem then?
Well, it feeds into our biodiversity plan, so we need to update our biodiversity. Which will come to the. So we'd be happy to accept that to go on our website, the government can propose that. Yeah, thanks, on a second, propose in a second. Give it a much. And then finally, the Fox Report, so it's a massive document, which we visually discussed. Yeah.
You basically break it down, haven't you?
Yes, the first one is, it should have been done with myself as chair, but as you know, it's been away for a few weeks, so I thought I might as well bring the whole thing. And so you've got a section that we agreed to look at this. And I think it's a useful tool, particularly if you're a new clerk or an intercouncil as well, and you're not quite sure what they've got. But, you know, I'd say that as we go through it, you see that it's, it's nothing really for us to be overly concerned about. It actually, just, just, there's a point of, point view from me, I've read it. And in line with the, the S R C C document, I mean, it's, it's a map exactly, isn't it? It, it follows exactly what the example is, has been laid out by what's. So with the two elements itself, the first is, is toolkit review and then the second is self-assessment. Or when collectively we will look how the council's going. Part one is a health check, which I've done. And it says work with the chair or small group of members when, yeah, by, by just small group of members night. And then part two is the self-assessment, so there is a lot to take in. That's, if you read it or not.
Is there any option what we currently doing?
Not really, no. No, it's more, it is literally a health check. Guide. It's a guide and as it says, you can then use it to influence your annual plan, which is a new requirement, we've always done one. So it's, it's, it's basically you take off the shelf document and then if you run through this, I've gone through all the various.
I can imagine a lot of small councils will be sweating over this.
Somehow, but then again, it helps because it's not, it's not about bad, good or bad.
I know that. They're not currently doing it whereas we are.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, you know, we score yes nearly everywhere.
I suppose there was a bit, wasn't there, about standing orders, which are just, we've noted a couple of times in meetings that they're out today. So that's the thing, I guess, then drives your action that you need to take going forward if you're noticing that.
Yeah.
I can't.
We're still waiting, National Social Labour Council's solicitor is updating standing orders with a group of Welsh clerks. So, but if that doesn't come soon, I'm going to have to look at adopting and slight changes to these standing orders. So on the first batch, there was nothing really to, to look at. And then on leadership people, again, we were doing okay on most of this. You've got copy code of conduct. And volume would be our training, but again, I circulated the new.
So at this point, it's just the new that's completed this.
Yeah. For you to double check back, but, you know, you have to, there are one or two areas on this, we, we haven't got what is required. One is the adoption and agility policy. We've had a series of male clerks, I don't suppose, who was top on our agenda. There you go, annual leave policy, we haven't got. And then there's a few where there's a plot of an express maternity leave policy.
Are these not covered by statute?
They are, but you've got to have a policy to interpret it. And we can get.
Separate statute, it's, it's either all.
Yeah, but, you know, it's a policy for you to implement, how you would determine, you know, like maternity, there's different types of maternity, isn't there? You can take so many weeks before or whatever, so it's just a matter of, they are all available, or as well as a cost, or we can just produce our own. Is this something that H R should look at? Yeah, yeah, so as we get to the bottom now, we do peer by, it's just very slow to notice. Then, there were one or two then, I think if I, papers of it. So we don't have an agreed engagement strategy. I think this was something that councillor Rush was keen on before showing us, that's something we've got to look at. And it's obviously therefore not reviewed periodically. We've got Welsh language, we translate when required. We've got electronic presence website, and again, all these things, all your members' names and everything is on there, can comply with. So there's one that is a better inclusion strategy, so to prepare draft reports from England to council in April. So that's in action. That's to fulfil that. Business processes, I think there are a few here, which we didn't comply with. On that, actually complied, it's not statutory, but we didn't match up with, you would say, better way. And I think there's one on general governance arrangement constitution. So there are constitutions that may not, as you see, they're slightly more council website. So there's a matter of mending and adapting.
Standing orders extended.
That's what I think, but I think if we need, we can look at the constitution from others. It's saying we don't have to adopt one, but we can certainly look at it. There's another one under this section, I think. Data audit, and we haven't got a full data audit to assess what information it holds. So this is gesture action there, scrooge, the end takes to look. And then they're all summed up again, I think. And the emergency plan spoke community resilience, we did look at that one of those a few years back, and it's sort of gone into a policy layby, and again, you can pull that one forward, building on what happened during Covid, I think, so that's another element which might be useful. So I'll, I think those are the other ones, there's one that stress management policy, no, stress risk assessment, no. We don't suffer from stress, do we guys? Not every day. Exactly. So we need to prepare, consider preparing a constitution, and that's suggested by the annual meeting in May last year.
Well, I already said we need to decide when we need it.
Yeah, 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 it's to consider the annual meeting cycle. Data audit, and you can have that done by I C O, it's free of charge. So they will come in and they'll do very impressive data, so I got it worth it. So at least we can apply into I C O. Prepare an emergency plan to help spoke resilience, so it's about just dusting that off really, and bringing it back in March and suggesting. And then I think everything to have, the policies have already covered distress management. The idea, recommendation is that we take those to H R in March again to get those approved. And I think we fell right on resources on financial management. I guess scribes would be help, so that's. Yeah, yeah. So like, that would be handover of the scribe, as you say, that so we've got all that in place, now it's a lot easier than trying to describe your own Excel spreadsheet. Exactly. And everything we do, we do sign off the annual return by thirty to June. Just to, last year's always used back from the external audit, which is quite common across Wales, so it's a bit of nuisance. So as a financial, we're okay. Comply with all those sections.
He's rolling in the head, look at all the words.
I'll skip to the. It's a final chopping up, no action by financially. So then that's the complete things that we need to do, so the data audit, so I want them in sort of date order now. So if we contact I C O in January and see if they can work out for the date order, and it starts on a phone, just go through things on a phone. Emergency plan by March, community engagement strategy by April, human resource committee by May, consider those policies that are lacking. Draft constitution for the meeting, I'm saying annual meeting, but it'd be the meeting after that on the annual meeting. So that's really the part one. And then the part two self-assessment is where we collectively go through. Which is perhaps, you know, you need to consider the questions and the statements, and then we will progress to filling in the various sections collectively. So it does, I don't know why, it's up and dippers. Because it's. Does council have a plan for it, so we need to ask these questions of ourselves collectively and then again, identifying evidence to reform the assessment and then later on down you will then.
So am I understanding correct then that, that we've written out that timetable, generally every March, for the topics and the themes, that we would complete then those sections?
Yeah.
Also on those meetings, so ideally you'd need councillors to do a personal check before the meeting.
Yeah. I just thought it's very hard to just do it all in one night, so. And there is no rush, there's no set timetable, but I thought if we look at two aims, that'd be all we need to think. Unless there's something, you know, big issue, and then we might have to defer, but the plan as it is, if you want to close your eyes, please back up to the top. It makes you all sick when I go to pages.
Very sound, reasonable.
So the proposition or the proposed recommendations you accept, we've gone through the part one toolkit and you agree to those actions being implemented. And they're all subject to bringing in reports to respective committees or council for further improvement. And then to start the process of the second phase two review by taking checks for two areas over the next three months. And then, as I say, the benefit of going through that, when we've come to our new first annual plan under the new legislation, we can feed those elements in then to that, and it would help generate that plan really. Do we have somebody to move that then? Excellent, somebody to second it. It's a lot, but thank you very much. Applications, planning, only two?
And there's one extra.
Well, actually.
I didn't, I didn't realise that July's financial statement just tacked on the edge of it.
Oh, yes, of course.
So we can all be.
Yeah, it, it, there are, it's in, actually three, but one is one, two is one.
Two is.
The one one five, so one oh one five and one oh one seven, because it's a solicited building, yeah, there are two applications. So just in summary, the N R W have requested more information from them, because they've got concerns over the effects of bats or the effect on bats. Company Ross Walton, no objection. A O N B have got concerns about the overall look, it's going to lose its look with larger openings and louvers going missing, the hard standings. It is, yeah.
Whereabouts is this?
It's the Riscog.
It's Riscog, it's rather confusing when you look at the.
It's in Riscog, actually, it's the end of the lane, isn't it?
All right, and then it goes down.
Knocks down barn that they want, somebody wants this. Literally it was in places are getting listed and they've got a lot of.
Can we just keep one conversation going, please? Sorry, it was a bit confusing, everyone's talking. It's all right, quite right.
The chapter describe who's.
Yeah, it's Barnet, isn't it? Barnet, isn't it? Yeah.
Well, it will depend on which barn it is.
It's the.
Is it that or that?
So they moved from where Ray and Alex live now, so. And they've investigated, they've requested further information. And then CPAT aren't happy with the H I A, the reports aren't detailed enough. So their historical impact assessment.
So the historical impact assessment. Um, it's great to list it, uh, as it's one of the very small number of the stamp, substantially intact farm buildings of this period in the Sangato community area. So. I know Derbyshire, its planning will look at that really hard, so whatever we say here, it's going to be. Actually, the decisions will be made by Derbyshire, whatever they do, everything.
It's in such a remote location, very.
It's out of sight, you can probably see it when you fly fishing the other side of the river.
Even then you're pushed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, i- his visual, pardon me, his visual impact is not one that is going to affect anybody who's viewing it. It has to do with the destruction of a, of a.
It's a piece of, a bit of history.
Yeah, historical building, so as you say, Derbyshire have a view on that.
And it with the A O N B, so perhaps we, we put no comment on that one, what do we, what do we think? Leave it to them, no comment and leave it to them. Yeah.
So you, um, um, we don't want to say we, we, we don't, but.
I was gonna say.
Our standard, our standard is to be found, we have no objection, obviously.
Yeah, no objection.
Or do we say something about we have concerns?
Do you want to say?
Oh, we just, we don't want to pass comments.
Well, the, the, the original house up there has been semi, semi. Finished for, for about twenty years, so I mean, it's, it's been a work in progress for so long that.
Yeah.
And nobody's bothered about it up until now, so I don't think we really need to worry too much about it, because it's Derbyshire on the, on the case. I think we.
So we won't object, or we won't not object.
We'd offer no objection.
But we often, no, no comment.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, no, often no comment.
And the other one, one oh four eight, uh, the canal service, this is the last one that came in. Um, the Canal and River Trust have no comment to make, highways have no comment to make. Uh, it basically is for a sign which is thirteen hundred by about eight hundred. Um, going on an existing fence, so it's got a lovely map of it, of the D A O N B, A O N B area from Riscog down to Chirk. So. That's, that's going to be a basket, I think, if anything else to the town, isn't it?
Yeah.
No objection.
Change of then, that's change of views.
Yes, that's come back, and if I can explain, I've had a phone.
I've seen that one.
It's forty two Mark Street, remember we.
Oh, yes.
objected last year on the base.
And then you probably get back to that, haven't you?
Just, um, well, what they're saying is they were misinterpreted last time, this is the comment they've had to, um. And it was not their intention to change the whole building into a coffee shop, but they just require a facility to sell coffee within the shop. Um, and therefore, um, they've resubmitted. And the way it would be handled is, is similar to how we've dealt with the shop here, where we study in our lease. That only ten percent of floor space could be devoted to the sale of alcohol and chocolates in the gift shop. So it would be an condition placed on any, any approval that relates to.
When is that? When, when is it, forty two?
Into the old gas show.